One.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's community forum about the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Chatham Planning Board, and we'd like to welcome all of you to this evening's community forum to review the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. Before we get started, I do have quite a few technical points to read to you because this community forum is being conducted via remote access. The meeting is available on Zoom and also by telephone. And let me read some points to you about that. And just to note that this meeting is being recorded and will also be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device, tablet device. And I do need to ask if anyone is recording the meeting. It's all right to record the meeting, but the chair needs to be notified. And also, before we continue with these technical points, first thing, if I could ask everyone who is not speaking, if you would mute your telephones if you're connected by phone, or mute the audio on your computer if you're connected by Zoom, and also to turn off the video function on your Zoom if you are not speaking. Thank you very much. That helps the reception. So to continue, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A 18, and the governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. I should really say this community forum that's being hosted by the Town of Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-646-558-8656. That's 1-646-558-8656. And the meeting ID is 993-8255-2424. That's 993-8255-2424. You can also join the meeting online via Zoom through the link that's posted on the agenda on the town website. And again, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And in the event that anyone becomes inadvertently muted, please press star six on your phone if you're connected by phone. So just to run through some of the procedures that will be following, I will do a roll call of all the planning board members to be sure that everyone is here, that we have a quorum. Also, for members of the public who are connected, who are not on the board, and you're participating in this forum, actually, what we'll be doing this time is our Director of Information Technology, Craig Rowe, will see raised hands, and he will, just strictly in order of how the hands were raised, he will recognize you. But once you've been recognized to speak, please give your name. And also, if you're connected by phone, please give the last four digits of your phone number. And also, since this is a community forum on West Chatham Neighborhood Center, we'd like we'd like to ask you to identify yourself by name, but also to let us know what category you fit into, whether you are a resident of Chatham, or a resident of West Chatham, or a business owner in Chatham or West Chatham, and whether year-round or seasonal. So if you could also let us know that. Let's see, we won't really be taking any votes tonight, but I will do a roll call of the board members. And at the end of the meeting, I will close the meeting with a verbal confirmation and adjournment, and we'll note the time of adjournment. Before we continue, I would like to introduce members of the Cape Cod Commission and our Community Development Staff, who will be coordinating the presentation on West Chatham zoning. So we have with us tonight from the Cape Cod Commission, Chloe Schaefer, who is the Chief Planner there, and Martha Hevner, who's a planner too at the Cape Cod Commission, and Elizabeth Kellum, who's a Community Design Planner with the Cape Cod Commission. And also with us is Katie Donovan, who is our Director of Community Development here in Chatham. We also have Ally Sabatino, our Principal Planner here in the Town of Chatham. And also, as I mentioned, Craig Rowe, our IT Director, will be helping us to conduct the proceedings by recognizing the raised hands in order. Before we continue, more additional points. If you're called upon, if you raise your hand and you are called upon, as a courtesy to everyone participating in the forum, we'd like to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. We'll let you know when that time is there. And also, we did receive some letters in advance of this forum, and we just want you to know the Planning Board has received copies of all the correspondence that people have sent in, and we will be reviewing those at a later meeting. And before we get started, I do also want to mention that full information on the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning initiative is available on the Town of Chatham website. If you go to the Planning Board page, and there's some topics on the left, actually, the one on the bottom is West Chatham Neighborhood Center Initiative. If you click on that, you'll have access to all of the background information that we may be referring to tonight, including the comprehensive plan for the Town of Chatham, the initial study that was done in 2013 and 2014 by the Cape Cod Commission. That's the Route 28 Visioning Study. Also, you'll have access to all of the additional community outreach and follow-up that was done by the Planning Board following that study. And you'll have the access to the survey, the survey that you'll be shown tonight. So all the information is there on the town website. So I'd really encourage you to go there and take a look at all of that. So before we begin, let me do a roll call of the board members. So Arts Brew, are you present?
Arts Brew, present.
Thank you. And Warren Chain, are you present?
This is Warren Chain, a present.
Tom Gagin, are you present? Seems that Tom Gagin may not be present. Bob Wirtschaft, are you present?
I'm working after present.
Thank you. Bob Dubis, are you present? Seems that Bob Dubis may not yet be present. And Roger Griffin, are you present?
Roger Griffin, present.
Thank you. And this is Catherine Halpern, and I am also present, obviously. So as we begin now, before I turn the meeting over to Chloe Schaefer, I just wanted to review briefly why we are presenting this community forum and why the Plan Board is reviewing the rezoning of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. As many of you know, in 2003, the Town of Chatham adopted a comprehensive plan. That was quite a long time in the creating and developing, some 10 years, and it was passed by unanimous vote at Annual Town Meeting 2003. Since that time, it's been fallen into the purview of the Planning Board to bring our protective zoning bylaws into accordance or into conformity with the comprehensive plan. As it stands, as it stood in 2003, and to a large extent, as it still stands now, the bylaw, the protective zoning bylaw of the Town of Chatham, does not guide, allow, and encourage development that is in accord with our comprehensive plan. And the Planning Board, we understand that the comprehensive plan is really the wish of the people of the Town of Chatham, what we want to see in the future. It's a set of policies and guidelines about how we want to see Chatham now and in the future. So it's very important that the specific bylaws that we have in place actually implement the comprehensive plan. So that's the job that the Planning Board has taken on. And in 2013 and 2014, the Town commissioned the Cape Cod Commission to do a study in this in this light, to do a study of a certain area of Route 28, from Barn Hill Road, I think, to the town border of Harwich, I'm sorry, Crowe Road, sorry, and to do a study of that area of Route 28, and to make recommendations about what needed to be done within that Route 28 Visioning Study area to bring the protective bylaw of the Town of Chatham into accordance with the comprehensive plan. Since that study, the Chatham Planning Board did additional meetings with members of the community of the Town of Chatham, as well as residents of each neighborhood center, which are West Chatham, South Chatham, the Cornfield, Crowe Road, and Crowe Road. Those are the neighborhood centers within that study area. And we did extensive community outreach to get input from the community, from the Neighborhood Center residents, about what the needs and desires of each Neighborhood Center residents are. Those were all integrated. The Planning Board has worked with those, the vision study, as well as the community input, Neighborhood Center residents' input. And in 2016, I'm sorry, there seems to be someone who doesn't have their audio muted. If everyone could mute their audio, that would be helpful. So just to continue, at Annual Town Meeting in 2016, a number of zoning bylaw amendments were passed by two-thirds vote at Annual Town Meeting that did implement a number of the recommendations of the Route 28 Visioning Project. And those had to do with the zoning for the South Chatham Neighborhood Center, as well as the rezoning of what we refer to as the in-between places, meaning the areas on Route 28 that were in between the neighborhood centers, returning that zoning to residential. So those measures were already passed. At that point, the next step in the process was for the Planning Board to continue to consider the zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. First, we worked on South Chatham, next is West Chatham, after that will be the Cornfield and Crowe Road. However, there was a gap in time because other matters required attention. As many of you know, there's a housing crisis on Cape Cod, and in that interim period, the Planning Board worked on the zoning bylaw amendment for accessory dwelling units. But now, again, we're returning essentially to where we left off in that process of implementing the recommendations of the Route 28 Visioning Project, which is an aspect of implementing the comprehensive plan for the Town of Chatham, and we're refocusing our attention on the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So that's a brief history of how we got to where we are tonight. And we want to collect additional input from the community, and particularly from West Chatham residents, about what should happen in the zoning for West Chatham. And with that, what I'd like to do is now to turn the meeting over to Chloe Schaefer, who will begin the presentation. And again, Chloe is the Chief Planner of the Cape Cod Commission. So Chloe, if you'd like to continue.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me, and thanks to everyone for joining us. So I'm just going to give a very, very brief overview of kind of this project, which is really one step towards potential new zoning amendments for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So as part of the Planning Board's work on this, earlier in 2020 this year, the town applied for and received a grant for commission assistance in helping to draft some potential new zoning amendments for this area through the District Local Technical Assistance Program. And so as part of that, as Catherine just went over, there has been a lot of previous outreach and engagement efforts done on this, but there's still more to do for sure. So we wanted to start out kind of by honing in on some different aspects of types and forms of development in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, and getting a better understanding of what people would like to see there, to then take back and compile and analyze with all of the work that's done before to begin starting that drafting process. So what I'm going to start with tonight is walking through a survey to get into some of the details in terms of further refining, again, what what people would like to see in this area in terms of the forms and design of development. So we are going to be using Zoom to conduct some live polling. If you have any issues at all, this survey is available on Survey Monkey via the Planning Board's webpage on this project. Or please reach out as well if you you're experiencing any issues. But the survey will be up, and people can take it through September 30 through Survey Monkey if they, you don't feel like taking it through this or are unable to. But so just to get everyone kind of familiar with how the Zoom polls work, we wanted to start with what I'll call a test question. So Craig, if we could pull up that test question, what is your favorite color colors? You should be able to select multiple colors. You don't have to choose just one. We'll let people get acquainted with this. And as we go through these 11 questions for the survey, getting at those specific aspects of development, design, and form, we'll put up polling questions. They'll be up for about 30 seconds until it seems like most people have been able to submit their answers, and then we will get to see them. So I'll just give people a few more seconds here. All right. Great. Craig, you would be so kind. All right. Wow. Okay. Interesting. Good to know. Blue seems to be a big winner here in terms of favorite colors. Great. So now, the first aspect that we're going to be dealing with, and I should mention that all of these are really kind of key aspects of development in its form, in terms of the character and feel of an area. And so the first one we'll be looking at is building forms and placement. I'm going to step through the options. The first we have here is kind of more simple, a single building with simple massings. It could range in size, but typically, they they are more simple in kind of their shape and structure. Next are single buildings, but that are composed of varied smaller massings. So sometimes, they might look like several buildings that have been put together, or they might be a bit more uniform, but again, are varied in their shape and size somewhat. Next are clusters of buildings on a lot or parcel. These might be clustered around a courtyard. They could also be clustered around some parking. And we have primary buildings without buildings, so where there is one kind of main larger building, but it might be supplemented with some smaller buildings around the property. And then frontage buildings, which typically screen buildings behind them, or minimize the view of the buildings behind them, often with parking in between them. So we'd now like to know what building forms you would like to see in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center area. You can, again, it might be all of them. That's great. If you'd like to select all of them, or if there's only a few, it's really up to you. We just want to kind of get a sense for that. So please take a little while now and submit your answers. Give people just a little bit longer here. All right. It looks like they stopped coming in. So, okay, great. So as you can see, there is a variety, it looks like, in terms of what types of building forms people support. Some did say single buildings with simple massings, but certainly, the most were single buildings with varied massings and clusters of buildings, was actually received the most votes, 63% it looks like of people. The primary buildings without buildings and frontage buildings that screened buildings behind them did also receive some votes. All right. So we'll now move on to the next aspect, which is the distance between buildings. And again, kind of how close buildings are to one another, if they form a really solid wall, or if they're spread out more, can can definitely impact kind of the look and feel and character of an area. So the first option here is buildings that are really very close to each other. This is a more tightly knit feel or built environment typically seen in kind of those more historic downtowns or village centers on the Cape. Next are buildings that are moderately close to each other, so spread out a little bit more, not quite as intense as that previous one room for driveways or more robust kind of landscaping in between the buildings. And then the third is, of course, buildings farther away from each other, perhaps lending a bit more of a rural feel to an area. So what distance between buildings do you support in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center area? Again, all you're allowed to pick as many of these that apply or that you'd like to see. All right. Let's see our answers. Craig, please. Okay, so definitely seemed like 64% received the most votes. That was buildings moderately close to each other, followed by buildings very close to each other. Buildings far away from each other didn't receive quite as much in the polling results with only 22%. So, now we'll move on to the next question. So this one gets at building height. In all of these cases, the building height is not to exceed 30 feet, but again, trying to understand kind of the general size of these buildings that people are comfortable with in this area. The first is one-story, generally smaller buildings. And here are just a couple examples of that. Next is one and a half stories, so getting a little bit taller. Two stories. And then the fourth option here is two and a half stories, which is the largest option. So again, what building heights do you support in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, though not to exceed 30 feet? One story, one and a half, two, or two and a half? Give people just a little bit more time here. Give people just a little bit more time here. All right, Craig, let's see the results, please. Okay, so it seems like there is kind of more of a general tendency towards those middle heights, one and a half stories and two, though there was some support, it looks like on both ends of that. Both one story as well as two and a half stories. All right. So we'll move on to the next question. So another aspect of building development or form that impacts kind of the the character, character, excuse me, or feel of an area is kind of the width of the front facade or main facades of buildings. This is focusing on buildings along the street and also focusing on kind of that, a single wall playing. So well, we'll see in some examples, a building might have multiple kind of variations in its facade. What we're getting at here is kind of the longest single one. So on the smaller end, we have up to 25 feet. And again, this is kind of illustrating that idea that the building itself perhaps is wider at other points, but that main facade along the street, looking at that length there. Next, we have 25 to 50 feet, which is fairly typical of buildings like this. 51 to 75 feet. And then over 75 feet at the longer end. So we'll move on to our next polling question. What width of buildings along the street do you support in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center area? You all are getting faster at this, but we'll give people a few more seconds here, a little longer. Great. Okay, Craig, let's see. All right. So it looks like most people responded with 25 to 50 feet, so up to 25 feet and 50 to 75 feet. Did get some responses as well. Just a few people responding or looked like just one in this survey group responded for over 75 feet as well. Let's move on to our next question. So this is now getting at the forms of the roof, not necessarily the height, which we got it earlier, but understanding what forms people would like to see. The first is a gabled roof, but that is more steeply pitched, like the examples here. Second option are pitched roofs that are shallower, as seen in these photos. And the third option are flat roofs. So here's our next polling question. What roof forms do you support in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center area? Deeply pitched, shallow pitched and flat. Just a few more seconds here. Great. All right, Craig, if you don't mind. Okay, so close tie almost there between steeply pitched and shallow pitched with 77% selecting deeply pitched and 72% selecting shallow pitched and only 8% selecting flat roofs. All right. Move on to the next question and aspect. So this one gets at what types of building features people would like to see on buildings in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. These are really kind of above and beyond the more general form or massing of the building and components that kind of add on to that. So the first is porches. These might be just along the front. They might wrap around the, the building itself. Next, we have dormers, which can come in various sizes, of course. We have bay windows, which do jut out somewhat from the building, the main building mass itself. Display windows for commercial structures, which as the name would suggest are typically used to display wares or goods for sale. And then the last element we have here are cupolas. So again, what other building features are desirable? It's up to you to select which ones you think are. Give people a few more seconds here. All right. Great. Let's see. Okay, so it looks like there is a pretty good mix. Almost all of those received several, several people selected all of them. Porches were selected the most, but um, this wasn't an either or. None of these questions really are, but just trying to gauge all the various things that people would support in this area. So next we will move on to the building materials themselves. So in terms of what building materials you'd like to see, the first option we have are shingles, which are seen throughout town, of course. Clapard as well. The third option here is brick. So what building materials are desirable in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center area? Singles, clavater, brick and/or. All right. Going to give people a little bit more time.
Add close caption.
All right. Okay, so definitely shingles were the most selected with 93%, followed by cloward at 73 and then 30% did select brick as well. Interesting mix. Moving on, another aspect that's important to the character of an area is kind of what happens between buildings and the street in those front yards. So the first thing are landscape plantings, various sizes and types, of course, but these are just some examples. Another option are stone walls and low fences and these can kind of help continue a, a street pattern along, along the roadway if there are buildings pulled farther back. Pedestrian pathways can also take many forms, shapes or sizes. Outdoor patios and dining spaces. And then lastly, kind of those more informal seating areas that might not be set up for, for dining, but allow people with a place to sit and take a break. So we'll move on to this polling question. To be between the building and the street in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center area, landscape planting, stone walls and low fences, pedestrian pathways, excuse me, outdoor patios and dining spaces and informal seating areas. We'll give people a little, a while longer to select. All right, great. Let's see. All right. So it looks like almost all of those. Most people selected landscape plantings, 87%, stone walls and low fences, 79%, pedestrian pathways and informal seating areas, both were at 67% and outdoor patios and dining spaces at 79%. So it seems like many people were comfortable with most of those. So we'll move on now to what happens between the buildings and in those side yards. And some of these are very, are the same options as what you'd also see in the front, but so landscaping, of course, pedestrian pathways that go along the side of buildings. Outdoor patios and dining spaces as well to the side rather than in the front. And again, those informal seating areas. So if we could bring up that polling question, great. To be allowed between buildings in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center area. Just a few more seconds here. Great. Craig, let's see the results, please. All right. So again, looks like most people selected that. Sucked in most of those landscape plantings, was that 92%? Pedestrian pathways, 85%. Outdoor patios and dining spaces, 82% and informal seating areas, 74%. All right, moving on. So this question gets more at kind of the types of development in the area. So assuming the West Chatham Neighborhood Center continues to serve as a mixed use or commercial area, what types of development do you think are most appropriate? We have options of small scale commercials such as banks or art galleries, medium scale commercial that might be a food establishment or medical office, for example. Clusters of retail and commercial buildings together, residential apartments within commercial buildings up on the second floor, residential apartments behind commercial buildings, standalone duplexes or small multifamily buildings behind commercial buildings, clusters of small homes behind commercial buildings, standalone duplexes or small multifamily buildings at the road frontage or clusters of small homes at the road frontage. If there is something else we didn't think of here, we'd love for you to send that into us, but let's pull up that polling question now, please. All right. Again, select all that apply here, not limited to one. I know there are a lot of options here. We'll give people a bit longer. Just a few more seconds. Great. Craig, if you would show us the answers, please. All right. So, okay, definitely. Several people selected the various commercial establishments, as well as some of those mixed use types, residential apartments above, on the second floor of commercial buildings or to the rear. Fewer selected kind of just clusters of small homes behind commercial buildings. And no one selected clusters of small homes at the road frontage. So that's pretty interesting as well. All right. So the last question I have for you guys tonight is just to get a sense of your association with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center area. So Craig, if you could pull that up, please. Please select all that apply, whether you live there, work there, visit, et cetera. Give people just a few more seconds here. All right, great. So it's like we have a lot of variety, definitely a lot of residents in the area, as well as people who own businesses, own land, visit or shop in the area. So that concludes our polling portion of the presentation tonight. I would like to invite anyone, one other thing we're looking for is if there are examples of developments that you've seen around town or elsewhere that kind of represent aspects of the built form. Excuse me, or development that you think would be desirable in the area. We invite you to send Ally Sabatino an email with that information. That is also great to have. And as well as I would also just say, if there are any options that weren't mentioned in these questions that you had ideas about, or that you'd like to bring up again, please send us an email so we can hear about those. But so now, kind of moving on from this, the next steps, we're going to look at the feedback from this survey tonight, as well as the online survey, as well as all of the previous efforts that have come before and laid the groundwork for this project and compile those and take those and then use them to start drafting some potential zoning bylaw amendments. And at various points throughout that drafting, we will then be looking for further public review and feedback on those draft zoning amendments. And then those last two steps are really an iterative process where we'll start drafting, drafting amendments, get feedback and further public review, incorporate that feedback, come up with another draft, et cetera. But that is just an overview of kind of where we're going from here. And so now I'm going to hand it back over to the town.
Okay, this is Craig Rowe, the IT director. So we are at the comment stage of the meeting. So we are at the comment stage of the meeting, or the forum, sorry. What, there's a couple of different ways you can provide comments. One is if you're on the Zoom meeting, I would ask you to raise your hand. I will go through each person who's raised their hand and ask them to provide comments. Before we begin the raised hand function, what I would like to do is ask if anyone from the audience who's called in on their telephone would like to make a comment. And what I'll do is I will create a list and then I'll call upon you as we go through the comments period. Please restrict your comments to under three minutes, as Catherine had said at the beginning of the meeting. This is a comments and your public input, we will be keeping a record of all of this and we will be reviewing it later date. If you're not comfortable either speaking through this forum, you can also send a chat message in the Zoom app to Katie Donovan. Please send it to Katie and then she can read them aloud for you if you'd like. And also you can email Ally Sabatino's, whose name, whose email address is on the main screen. It's a Sabatino, S A B A T I N O at chatham-ma.gov. So first off, I'd like to ask if there is anyone in the audience on the telephone that would like to provide some input. If you could just unmute yourself and give me your name and your last four numbers of your telephone and I'll put you on the list. Okay. Okay, I'm not hearing anyone at this point in time. I will come back to that to the telephone portion. Why don't we start? Carol Bliss has raised her hand. Carol, would you like to make a comment?
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are, Carol. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Carol Bliss and I live year-round at 100 George Ryder Road South, which is about 200 feet south of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. There is already a disturbing conflict between life in the West Chatham Neighborhood and operations at the Chatham Municipal Airport due to inadequate town planning in the past and insufficient control of airport procedures by the town. Consideration of new zoning regulation has the potential to address this conflict, or at least to limit it from becoming worse in the future. The Airport Commission is currently considering plans to alter operation ways that could extend the runway protection zone to cover a significant area of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, as well as increase local noise and air pollution affecting the safety and health of existing and potential future businesses, customers and residents. Zoning should not permit further development without addressing the airport's negative impact and especially restricting planned expansion of this impact. In particular, zoning should forbid any expansion of the runway protection zone. In addition, the airport's recently funded environmental study should be required to include noise and air pollution impacts on residences and businesses in and around the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. Planning for new development in West Chatham should take into account the results of such an environmental study, which should include the impacts on humans. Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak and I hope you take my comments seriously.
Great, thank you very much, Carol, for that input. We will, we do have a recording and we will make sure that we respond back to your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Tom Wilson has raised his hand. Go ahead, Tom.
I'm sorry.
Hi, Tom.
Yeah, sorry about that.
How are you?
Okay, good. Yeah, my name is Tom Wilson and I live in West Chatham. And I'm happy to review this zoning update to West Chatham because I think we really have an opportunity here to address some of the housing crisis shortages of affordable and attainable housing here. It's interesting to see that, you know, a lot of the options that were presented tonight are acceptable to a lot of the residents of West Chatham, things like apartments behind commercial buildings, on top of commercial buildings and so forth. And some of the form factors that were presented here, you know, would really give us an opportunity to create some substantial numbers of housing units that would work towards solving this crisis. So I appreciate the feedback from the Planning Board coming to the residents of West Chatham. I appreciate the work of the Cape Cod Commission in terms of giving us a very clear and graphical presentation on, on what some of these changes may, may look like. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your input, Tom. Stephen Buckley is up next, but what I might do is if anyone who's called in and is having difficulty unmuting themselves, if you press star six, you will unmute yourself.
This is this is Gloria Freeman, I'm on the phone.
Hi Gloria, go ahead, you can make your comments, please.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all for the opportunity to think about the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. It is a very important effort for Chatham's residents, particularly those who live in West Chatham. But I have to say, I do not think that this is the time during the pandemic and while the West Chatham roadway project is still ongoing to be doing this study. I echo what someone else said in a letter, that one problem at a time, please. There is no way for us to envision what the roadway will look like in real time. As I recall, the steps of the commercial Fisherman's Building will be about twelve to fifteen feet from the easterly roundabout. Sidewalks, bike paths and multi-use paths might, when complete, dictate the development and redevelopment. And the airport's master plan might have an impact on density and building height. I think that the uses are important. I had heard that the Planning Board had discussed the uses. I asked for a draft of the Planning Board's proposal for uses, but didn't get it. I do have questions. I would like to know who was, I did not vote on the survey, but I'd like to know who, who was voting and the number of people voting, were Planning Board members voting, were citizens or just anyone who happened to tune in. I think it's important for us to know that when I dialed in, I was told there were sixteen people in the meeting. So if you take away the Planning Board and the staff and the Cape Cod Commission, what number of people were voting? I also have a question, what's the underlying zoning? What are you proposing for the underlying zoning in the district? Can anybody answer that question?
Hey Craig, this is Ally Sabatino. Gloria, thank you so much for your comments. We really do appreciate them. So this zoning is proposed and again, it's going to go through all the public comment. We're going to talk about it, but right now the Planning Board is envisioning that this zoning would be the underlying zoning for the Neighborhood Center. So it would not be an overlay district, it would be the underlying zoning going forward.
Oh, not an overlay district. Everything that you have written calls it an overlay district. At any rate, my last comment is that you have certainly made your intention known to comply with a long-range comprehensive plan for which you are to be congratulated. You have chosen selective sections of the plan to quote, but completely ignored was the plan's very first goal, which is also the first goal of the Planning Board's master plan. And it states, quote, "Bylaws and regulations should be created to ensure that intensity is maintained or minimized, never maximized." If your initiative's intention is to achieve the comprehensive plan's vision, then it is this goal that should be focused on and no plan should provide choices that deviate from it. And I thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much Gloria for your input. And just to give you some stats on the polling, we have around fifty-eight participants on this call and that includes board members, Board of Selectmen and town residents. We had roughly about thirty-five to forty people voting in each of the polls. So roughly about little over sixty, seventy percent of the participants were voting in the polls, just so. And we will provide this information to you. I've spoken with Ally and we will provide the information from the polls in hopefully a very easy to read format so we can see kind of where the residents and the people who voted are on these poll questions. Okay?
Okay, thanks, thanks again.
Great, thank you Gloria. Stephen Buckley, you're up next, sorry for the delay.
Okay, I'm glad Gloria went first. Anyway, I applaud the idea. I've been a long proponent of using technology like this in order to reach out to more people and get more people engaged. So, so I'm glad that you're doing this. However, technology does not make, does not automatically make for a good meeting. And so I'm looking at a screen right now, it says comments. Actually, there should be questions, clarification questions that come first to clarify, you know, like what's going on? People are, are, may have questions, they're confused or not quite clear about certain things. And that should have come first. And then perhaps not even now, but a week from now or something, give people a time to think about what they've seen and what they understand. And then have, be a little more thoughtful because a lot of the things, and I appreciate the effort that's gone into this and so forth and so on, but to be thrown out a lot of things and to be able to say, okay, so what do you think right now? It's, it's like, wow, um, do I pick one or two or what do I do? It's, it's really quite rushed in that sense. And we put so much time in over the years, as the timeline showed, that about this, I don't want this to be seen as like, well, we took a survey during the online forum and that's the gospel now. That's my concern is that, and one last thing is that we did do something with the Cape Cod Commission about ten years ago where we asked them what they thought about West Chatham Route twenty-eight. And then they came back three months later after we, after we had a meeting where we said, oh, we like this and we like that, we like this, we like that, planters and lights and this and that, bus stops and everything. They came back and they showed us what that was and everybody hated it. They go, whack, this looks terrible because it's called designed by committee. Everybody puts in what they want, you add up with, you end up with something that nobody likes. So just, I just, I think there should be some lessons learned from this. I love the technology, love the effort. I think we need to be a little more thoughtful. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you for your comments, Stephen. Just to, just to clarify, just a little bit there is we will, this is just the, the beginning of this, the, the survey. We are taking this information, we're putting it together with the other comments that we've received from people, the emails that are coming in, the survey results. So we will be doing more than just, you know, the, the comments on this, on the poll. One of the constraints that we have, and as you can understand, Stephen, is if we put a whole bunch of questions up there, we would probably be end up finishing the meeting around twelve o'clock tonight. So we tried to, to make it comments, bring it together and hopefully people will continue to provide more comments to us through Ally's email and through the upcoming meetings that, that will be, you know, more meetings about this subject. But I really appreciate your input. Thank you, Stephen.
All right, this is Ally, I just want to make fun comment too. Thank you, Stephen, for your comments. I think you know the Planning Board is really interested in what everyone has to say and is taking these comments very seriously, but I think you also know that a lot more of work and time will go into this and a lot of more public outreach. We always try to make these community-based bylaws going forward. So this is just kind of the kickoff, this is the first thing. We're hoping we can get some input this way, but there'll be much more input going forward, definitely.
And this is Catherine. If I could just make a comment also to follow up on what Ally said. And Chloe did mention this in the beginning, but all of the work that's been done in the past regarding West Chatham, you know, as you know, in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, there was the Route twenty-eight Visioning Study. And subsequent to that, there were, in addition, a lot of workshops held with each Neighborhood Center by the Planning Board and Community Development Department. And a lot of community input was gathered at that time. There was extensive work done at that time. All of that has been reviewed again by the Planning Board, by Ally and the Community Development Center, and also again by our team on the Cape Cod Commission. And all of that work will also be integrated into anything that we do going forward, as well as the current comments that we've collected from the survey tonight and the online survey and as Ally's mentioned, in future community forums on this matter. So this is just one piece of the whole picture. Thank you.
Can I get on the list, Elaine Gibbs, to speak?
Yes, you can, Elaine, just, if you, can you raise your hand? If not, I'll come back to you in about two minutes.
There is no capacity for me on this, what I'm looking at to raise my hand. So I just wanted to get, okay, thank you.
Okay, great, give me two minutes. Katie Donovan, you've been monitoring the chat. Do you have any comments from the public that you'd like to, to read out aloud?
Yes, Craig, thank you very much. So we have one comment in, two comments total. I'll read the first one from Joe Smith. He said, I, Katie, curious if Chatham looked at other towns' plans as a model? By the way, this is a fantastic reason, presentation, great job and congrats to all. And I don't know if Ally maybe wants to take the, that question.
Sure, thank you, Katie. And then I'll also let Chloe from the Cape Cod Commission jump in because I know that she wants to. But yes, we were looking at other towns as models for this and I know that Chloe has specific ones that she looked at, so I'm actually going to pass this question to her.
Sure, well, this is kind of getting a little bit ahead. I did have, I have a few more slides in store for people after we're kind of done with the comments and questions part of this. But we've been at the Cape Cod Commission looking at kind of a new tool for zoning called Form-Based Codes. And as part of that, we have been looking at some other New England towns and what they've done there. Additionally, we've kind of done a similar effort with other towns across the Cape, but more focused on what types of housing that they'd like to see in certain parts of their town in terms of looking at visual preferences and getting input that way. And there are some references in the document later, I will say, that have some examples of that. But I will, I'll leave that there. That's all right.
Thank you. And then this is Katie again, just with the, the next comment that we received through the chat from
that we received through the chat from Peter Gross. And his comment was, my main concern for this area is accessibility. By this, I mean good, smooth, well-marked roads and sidewalks, which will, which I hope will be the case when Route 28 construction is completed. I would like to have improved bicycle access from the south of Route 28 to the bike path. The southerly end of George Rider Road is a bit scary on a bike. This may not be the primary focus of this forum, but I think these issues are important. So thank you very much for your comments, Peter, and we'll take those into consideration. And that's all I have at this point in time Craig.
Katie and Craig, I actually have one, this is Ally.
Go ahead Ally.
Gretchen from Rocking Unicorn Nursery School. She actually sent one to me. The question goes, how would any proposed changes in the zoning bylaw affect pre-existing businesses slash real estate moving forward? Would we be grandfathered in, or would we have to conform to any changes? You can read my question out loud. So thank you, that's something that the Planning Board is really considering and definitely will think about as we go forward with this bylaw. I know that they were very interested in those, you know, what could potentially happen in the future with the zoning initiative for this West Chatham Neighborhood Center in the past. So I know that it's something that's on their mind and they'll be thinking about how it will affect the current, you know, uses in this zone. And Chloe, I don't know if you want to, you know, chime in anymore on this or not, or anyone from your staff?
Okay, she might be muted. I also had a comment come through, and please excuse my pronunciation of this, from Thera Albertini. Is it possible to consider planting trees along Route 28 to camouflage the unsidely power lines? So we can add that to our comments, and thanks for the input. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to make comments?
Elaine Gibbs.
Elaine Gibbs, anybody else? I see Deborah has been popping her hand up. I'm not sure if she'd like to make a comment.
Yes, I would.
Okay, I'm gonna have Elaine Gibbs go ahead, and then.
I've had my hand up for quite a long time.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll go to Elaine and then I'll come back to you Deborah, okay? Go ahead Elaine.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I would like to recommend that the next time you do this, you do not use Zoom and you use Microsoft Teams. Microsoft Teams is what all of the other committees are using, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health. And I've downloaded that app. This Zoom here, there is no way to see all the participants. There's no way, you know, you have to go and click on icons that don't even say what they are to figure out how to mute or unmute yourself. So I would hope that you, that the town sticks with one, and Microsoft Teams is the way to go. This is not efficient. People should not have to have a high learning curve when they just want to make public comments. I would also reiterate what Gloria Freeman said, and we didn't really get an answer. We know that fifty-eight people were on the call, but I want to know how many people voted who are not Selectmen, who are not Cape Cod Commission, who are not staff members that are purely citizens that are on here? Because then when you look at the data and say sixty-four percent of twenty, you know, is twelve. We're making serious decisions about an entire community area when maybe twelve or thirteen people are voting. So I would hope when you issue a report and you talk to the press that you say this was X number of people, twenty, thirty, and sixty-four percent said X. Because otherwise, it's a little deceiving. I'm concerned that this is coming up now because we are in the middle of a pandemic. We cannot have public meetings. This is, this is a huge, is going to have a huge impact on the town. The airport, until the airport master plan is approved, I don't know how we can talk about heights of buildings or, you know, anything like that. You know, this is a neighborhood that has an airport in it. And yet somehow the airport hasn't even come up in the discussion. And so we also had decided that we weren't going to even talk about this until the roadway was completed. Well, it's gotten delayed. We have no idea what it's going to look like. We don't know anything until at least next spring. And I would hope your objective to start this now is not so that you can have a bylaw on the town meeting next May. That, this is not the way to go. We have too much on our plates. It would be really unfair to push this through so that we have a bylaw change when we don't even know what the intersection's going to look like, what that twelve hundred feet is going to look like, what the Airport Commission is going to do, how many planes are going to be flying in there? And we need to have more participation. I, my understanding is that, you know, when discussions had taken place and there were meetings, there were a hundred people from the West Chatham area. And there are fifty-eight total. There are probably twenty citizens on this because they don't even know how to sign on. So, you know, you can collect data, but when you're talking about percentages, make sure you tell us what the actual universe was, whether it's twenty or thirty people, because that makes a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you Elaine for your comments. Deborah, would you like to make your comments?
Deborah, it appears you're muted. If you could unmute.
I did unmute with one, I guess this has to do with Elaine. I did unmute at one spot on the screen, and can you hear me now?
We hear you Deborah.
You can hear me?
Yes.
My concern is that you're dealing with the aesthetics, which are certainly important, but you're not. The first thing, in my opinion, that you should be looking at is how this area is zoned. It's zoned for general business. And that would allow, that would allow light industry and manufacturing, wholesale business and storage, lumber and feed establishments, roadside stands, and adult use establishments. How do those uses fit into those attractive little buildings with peaked roofs and porches? This area needs to be rezoned to small business. And even when you do the rezoning to small business, there are uses within small business such as trailers and camping vehicles and tents. How are you, do you really want all of these various uses, which are now allowed for this area? I think that's really, don't you think that's a first step? To consider the uses that are allowed in this area? That's my suggestion, is that you start with that. Wonderful that you have these pretty pictures, and I certainly enjoyed participating. But think of the possible uses that are on the books right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello Craig, this is Catherine. If I could make a comment, yeah. I just wanted to make a comment in response to Deborah's comments. And actually, the way the process has gone along, that's exactly what's happened. The Planning Board has considered the uses first. As we mentioned, as I mentioned, and Chloe mentioned in the beginning, this community forum tonight is just building on all the work that's been done previously regarding the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And a lot of information was gathered, a community input about the uses. And in fact, the Planning Board has thoroughly reviewed that previous input and at least provisionally defined what uses will be part of West Chatham going forward. That is all based on the previous community outreach that we've done. And just to clarify, that what we're considering here is actually writing new zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. It will, as Ally Sabatino mentioned, it will not be a zoning overlay district. It will be new zoning, that will be the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. So it will no longer, what will be proposed is that the GB zoning be eliminated and that the new zoning that is getting created now together as a community, creating it now, that will be the zoning for West Chatham. So you're absolutely right Deborah in what you've pointed out. And as it turns out, that is the way we've been proceeding. So I just wanted to comment. Ally, did you have anything to add to that, that might clarify the process?
No, I think you answered it perfectly. Thanks Catherine.
Thank you Ally.
Catherine, Ally, this is a problem we're after. I would like to reassure Deborah that virtually, I think every use that she mentioned is, was not included in our provisional assessment as to what the uses could be. So rest assured that we're not thinking that we would be putting in strip clubs or industry or tent trailers or anything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Tom Wilson with his hand up. Tom, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I would. It's more along the lines of a question, but I guess I can phrase it as a comment. I read in the paper recently that the airport received a bunch of money to do an environmental assessment. And my, my question kind of is, does the Planning Board interact with the Airport Commission in terms of things like that? Because my understanding of environmental assessment is that it can involve the human impact of, of an airport. And it would seem that if we're looking at this neighborhood center just at the end of the runway, does the Planning Board interact directly with the Airport Commission or provide feedback or ask questions about things like this environmental assessment and its impact on people? That would be my question slash comment. The other, the other aspect that I want to state is, I'm very much in favor of this new kind of zoning where you can get to see the form that the building is taking in a neighborhood as opposed to reading pages and pages of technical specifications. So those were my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, would you like to, I would be, Katie, would you be able to respond to that question? Regarding the Airport Commission?
This is Ally. So Tom, thank you for your comments and questions. In the past, the Planning Board has definitely reached out to other boards, town staff, if they have questions when they're rezoning or changing zoning in specific locations. And I can assume that the Planning Board will obviously, because we are looking at this location, want to hear from the Airport Commission. So I assume that in the future, you know, as we go through zoning here, we'll probably invite the Airport Commission to come and, and talk to us so we can go through all of, you know, the potential issues that might come up for rezoning this area.
Great, thanks Katie, thanks Ally. Deborah, I see your hands back up, do you have another comment?
No, I don't know how that happened.
Okay, no problem. I see Stephen Buckley's hand has gone up. We'll probably take a couple more questions and then a couple more comments, and then we'll move on to, back to Chloe. Go ahead Stephen.
Okay, you know, when I was looking at the presentation, kind of reminded me of how I used to, my wife and I used to go shopping for furniture in our early years. And we'd see a piece of furniture that we liked. And then we would try to figure out how to make it fit in our house. Without starting, and now that we're older and wiser, we actually look at the different rooms and decide what would go well there. And then we go shopping for furniture with certain features. So I appreciate the fact that, yes, if you ask people what they want, you might end up with something that will fit. But West Chatham Village District, which actually is misnamed, it shouldn't be a neighborhood. Should be called a neighborhood, it's a village district. Anyway, we should look, there's only a limited number of rooms there. So the idea that we could search for features that we like and then somehow shoehorn them into what we have, the limited number of spaces that we have, is kind of a backwards way of looking at it. So I just wanted to point that out, that to figure, look at different parcels and see, like the Summer Residence Advisory Committee came up with a conceptual design for cluster housing and said, hey, here's something you could put on an acre, where might that go? And then get people to say, yes, that might look good at a piece of property that I happen to be. Debbie Aiken knows about it, my father's property at 1533. So I'm just throwing it out there. I would love for people to visualize what would go at 1533 Main Street, which is three acres. So I'm just throwing it out there, as opposed to looking for whether something should have dormers or not. You know, so that's my thought. Thank you very much.
Hey, thanks Stephen. At this point in time, it looks like no one else is raising their hand. So what we might do is we'll move back to Chloe. Please remember to go to the Town of Chatham website and, and complete the survey. Also, if you have comments, please email them to Ally Sabatino at asabatino@chatham-ma.gov. Chloe, would you like to proceed with your presentation?
Sure, thanks Craig. So I'm just going to finish up here quickly with a little presentation about Form-Based Codes. You may have heard about these already somewhat, or this might be something entirely new to you. But this is a relatively new zoning tool, as far as zoning tools go. And something that through this project, we're, we're going to be exploring a little whether or not that is something that we pursue or like, more likely would be pursuing certain elements, bringing that into the potential zoning amendments. So as the name would suggest, Form-Based Codes really focus a bit more on regulating the form of development and putting less of an emphasis on regulating solely by use. So quickly, there are four general principles to Form-Based Codes. The first is that they're rooted in a public participation process to understand what stakeholders would like to see in an area. The next is that they're contextual, so they really take into account the surroundings, the history of an area, desired character, and calibrate the code to that. They're generally positive, stating what people would like to see in an area rather than focusing on what is prohibited. And oftentimes through some graphics, providing some illustrative examples of, of what the vision is for an area. And then of course, again, it does emphasize form more over the function of a building or a development. And so looking at those design aspects and understanding kind of how those might be regulated a bit more to get the desired form in an area. And there are several different approaches within Form-Based Code or to using Form-Based Code. So on one end of the spectrum is reforming an existing zoning ordinance. And this is taking, excuse me, just some elements from a more full-fledged Form-Based Code and incorporating them into the existing bylaw. This might be something such as setting not only minimum setbacks, but maximum setbacks, or incorporating some of the elements that we were looking at here in terms of roof forms, facade widths, more about those building elements as well. There's more of a middle ground approach where a town might decide to kind of do more of a hybrid, both form-based and use-based. Or they might decide to do a pilot Form-Based Code in just one smaller area of town. And I will say, what we would likely explore would be something kind of between reforming the existing zoning bylaw and that middle ground in terms of approaches here, if we do move forward with some Form-Based Code elements. And then on the other end of the spectrum is a full Form-Based Code where a town redoes their entire zoning using the Form-Based Code. redoes their entire zoning using the form-based code approach. And that is, I will say, not something we're talking about now, but just kind of an idea of what other municipalities have done and that places have kind of taken this approach across their entire municipality. And so for those full-form based codes, there are kind of some key components. One is a regulating plan, which is kind of similar to a zoning map. It shows where certain regulations would apply. In form-based code, it might be arranged a bit differently, not so much focused on use, but oftentimes it might involve character districts, which outline different parameters for different areas of town that are more suited for certain types of character. It really focuses on public space standards and what goes on in the area where people are interacting with buildings. It's a bit less concerned with regulating what happens within those buildings, but more on where people are walking around or where they're going to interface with buildings, placing some standards there. And then building form standards. And a lot of what we were talking about tonight could potentially help illustrate some or articulate some building form standards for an area, getting into a bit more of the form for various developments. They also can include a wide array of optional components depending on where the zoning might be located. If it's creating new blocks, they might set certain standards for blocks or look at floodplain standards, for example. And so that is just a very high level, very brief overview. But we did want to put something in here to kind of start introducing this concept in case it is something, as we kind of pursue potential amendments to the zoning, if we start to incorporate some of the elements of form-based code in here to, again, help articulate the form and design of development that people would like to see in the area moving forward. I'm just going to put this slide up here for some further project information resources. The top is linked to the online survey. If anyone had issues taking the survey tonight or if you'd like to share it with other people you think should be taking it. Of course, the town webpage on this initiative in the middle. And then if you're curious in doing a deeper dive into form-based codes and what they are, we developed a document that helps provide an introduction to form-based code, codes and, and why municipalities might be considering them as zoning tools. So with that, I would just like to say thank you again to everyone for joining us and for your insightful comments. And I'm going to then hand it back over to Ally or Craig at the town to kind of wrap up and go from there. Thank you.
So thank you so much, Chloe. This is Ally Sabatino. If anyone has any other comments or any thoughts after the meeting, you know, you go home, you think about it, you sleep on it, maybe in the next few days you think of something. Please feel free to email me any comments or questions. I will send them all to the planning board. And as we are, you know, considering drafting amendments to this neighborhood center, everything will be considered. The planning board always looks at each and every email and letter that comes forward. And they will consider all of the comments and thoughts very carefully as we go forward with this. And I just want to thank everyone for attending tonight. We really do appreciate it.
Could I ask one more question?
Sure.
I, yes, I just want to know what the ultimate objective is. Is the plan for the planning board to put forth a bylaw amendment at the town meeting next May?
We, whenever we go in with, and again, I'm, you know, the planning board, I don't, if anyone on the planning board has any other comments besides mine, please feel free to jump in. The planning board is taking comments and going very slowly on the zoning initiative. We'd like to hear comments from everyone and very thoroughly and accurately start to craft a really community engagement bylaws. So there is no timetable on this specifically. We are just starting the process of getting, you know, more public input and to try to create a bylaw. So there is no timeframe on this. And if the planning board members want to jump in, please feel free.
Yes. Hi, Ally. This is Catherine. Elaine, I'll just add that I think we did mention that we're working with the Cape Cod Commission under a grant. So, so the time is now to work with them on this because the grant is in place now. But as Ally said, yes, it's true, we, you know, obviously we are in the middle of a pandemic. But we still would like to go forward under the terms of the grant and get to a certain point in the process, at least while we are working with the Cape Cod Commission. So anyway, so I just wanted to comment on that.
So I guess I would ask, what are the terms of the grant? Because we are in a pandemic, but the roadway is nowhere near completion. And to make, and the airport commission doesn't have a master plan. So if we're bound by the Cape Cod Commission to pass a bylaw and we're not ready, we can be taking money from them for a grant.
Could I? Catherine, this is Chloe. Would you like me to jump in?
Yes, you can, you, please do.
Sure. So we're working to help develop a draft, an initial draft. But it's certainly you guys are not required by the grant to be passing a bylaw. So it's just to get things started and to help start drafting that initial draft.
Thank you, Chloe. This is Catherine.
Hey, Catherine, Ally, this is Bob Wertschafter. If I could say something to sort of reassure everyone, I'm going back to the Mr. Buckley's statement about buying furniture. And first, I'd like to say you're very fortunate because you go out with your wife and choose furniture. I am of the family where my wife comes back with a furniture picture and tells me I like it. But in any case, we are not buying, what we did tonight is not buy furniture, but decide whether we were going to have a antique motif or a modern motif in our, in our big house. And that we're nowhere near, and probably based on the way this works, the decision about the, you know, the furniture is, is something that is the planning board, is it's not in our purview. So we're very much, we're very much interested in making this work for, for the community. And that we're very open to listening to these comments and, and, and thank you for, for them all.
Great. Thank you, Bob. This is Catherine again. And Ally, I'll just check with, in with you and with Katie and Craig. And if there's no more business to be discussed or at the point where I should request a motion to adjourn the meeting? Or are there, is there some additional business we need to cover?
Oh, I believe that we have wrapped up the presentation and the comment period unless there's any other comments that anyone has.
So we can see if there's any other comments. And Craig, if you can help, if you see a raised hand.
Catherine, Stephen Buckley has raised his hand.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Buckley. Yeah.
I appreciate the fact that the planning board will consider all the comments that are sent by private email. But it would be nice to see what the public, what the planning board gets to see so that everyone can see what the public comments are. That they could be posted or put up on the website someplace and see what other people are saying. Thank you.
Great. Again, this is Catherine, and I would just like to interject that one thing that is already available on the website, if you, on the planning board page, is the compendium of all of the previous comments that have been gathered from the public in the previous workshops that have been done subsequent to the Route 28 Visioning Study. So all of those have been gathered together. And there are links to that on the planning board page on the town website, including the links to the initial Route 28 Visioning Study as well as the comprehensive plan. So all that background information is there. This, you know, I think as we have explained, is kind of a second level of gathering community input in terms of form specifically. Specifically in terms of building form. Because we'd like to use, as Chloe was explaining, probably a mixture of form-based code and traditional zoning in terms of developing the new zoning bylaw for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So this is more specifically about building form. And yes, to answer your other question, all of the public responses, we will be reviewing them at future meetings and all of those will be completely publicly available. So any other comments? Is that Deborah with her hand up, Craig?
Yes, Deborah, would you like to make?
Okay, this is, this is a problem with this technology. I have no intention of having it my hand up.
Okay. Great. I think you're good to call for an adjournment, Catherine.
All right. So again, this is Catherine, and it looks like we're at the point where we can adjourn the meeting. And so for that, I would ask for a member of the planning board to offer a motion to adjourn the meeting.
This is Art Spru. I'll make a motion to adjourn the public meeting.
Thank you, Art. Can I have a second to that motion?
Bob Dubus seconds it.
Thank you, Bob. So now we'll do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain approve.
And is Tom Gagin present? I guess he hasn't joined the meeting. Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter approves.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, and I also approve. Let's note that we're adjourning this community forum on West Chatham Neighborhood Center at 7:39 PM. And again, thank you, everyone, for participating. We very much appreciate that you've joined in. And we'll, we'll be having more community forums on this matter. Thank you so much.